Finance Committee will hear testimony concerning the governor's proposal for taxation. After this hearing, there will be a second hearing on housing, if people are tuning in and wondering. I'd like to now introduce the members from the Assembly that are here with us today. And then Senator Granados, who is the Chair of the Revenue Committee, will introduce the members of the Senate. So we have with us today Assemblywoman Williams, who is Chair of our Real Property Tax Committee. We have Assemblyman Braunstein, Assemblyman Mondomni, Assemblywoman Shimskey, and Assemblyman Delon. And Assemblyman Granados, would you like to introduce your colleagues?
Good morning. I'm doing my best Liz Krueger impression today, Chair of the Committee on Budget and Revenue. We're joined so far by the ranker on the Finance Committee, Senator O'Mara, Senator Lou, Senator Weber, the ranker on the Budget and Revenue Committee, as well as Senator Burello.
Assemblyman Ed Roth is the ranker on Ways and Means.
Right now, we are joined by Assemblyman Brian Miller, our ranker on Real Property Tax.
Thank you. So let me just, some ground rules, both for witnesses and for the members. The governmental witness, our Tax Commissioner, Amanda Hiller, will have 10 minutes. The non-governmental witnesses that'll come later will have three minutes each. They will be in a panel. And after all of them speak, then there would be the time for the questions. In terms of questions, the Chairs of the relevant committee will have 10 minutes to ask questions of the governmental witness. And all other members would have three minutes. And when we get to the non-governmental witness panel, all members will have three minutes. The Chairs of the relevant committees will have, are the only ones who have a second round with the governmental witness of three minutes. And then just sort of the warning to everybody, your testimony has been received, is posted. Please don't read word for word. Somehow, the time clock goes much faster than you think. And speaking of the time clock, there's a green button. That means it's time to go, to speak. The yellow button means there's a minute left, and the red button means you're finished. And just so members know, too, tell both myself and Senator Granados that they wish to speak. So with that, I'd like to introduce the, still Acting Commissioner? Okay. Acting Commissioner and General Counsel of the Department of Taxation and Finance, Amanda Hiller.
Good morning.
Oh, no. Oh, that's also, there's, you press it, kind of, the new mics, and the ring will turn green. There you go.
There we go. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Great. Good morning, Senator Granados, Assemblymember Weinstein, and members of the fiscal committees. I'm Amanda Hiller, Acting Commissioner and General Counsel of the Department of Taxation and Finance. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss Governor Hochul's 2025 executive budget and the operations of the Tax Department. When I appeared before you last year, I warned of risks on the horizon. The main concern at the time was that the tightened monetary policy we needed to combat inflation could cause a recession. Today, it appears we may have avoided the recession we feared. Still, New York's economic recovery continues to lag behind the national recovery. As we feared, the weakening of tax receipts we saw in fiscal year 2023 did continue in 2024, and the division of the budget projects that tax receipts, although improving, will remain well below 2023 levels in fiscal year '25 and '26, largely due to weaker personal and business income tax receipts. Job growth and wage growth are slowing, and affordability remains a pressing concern for too many New Yorkers. Governor Hochul recognizes these challenges and has proposed a responsible state budget to support our ongoing economic recovery. The governor's budget proposal makes targeted investments in mental health, public safety, housing, and education that will benefit all New Yorkers without raising taxes. In addition, her budget proposal devotes an unprecedented level of resources to address the needs of recent migrants. The executive budget includes several revenue-related proposals, but there are two that stand out. First, the governor has proposed to improve sales tax compliance in the short-term vacation rental industry. I suspect that most individual hosts don't realize they are responsible for collecting the sales taxes due on their rentals. The executive budget proposes to shift those sales tax responsibilities from individual hosts to the Internet platforms that facilitate rentals and collect the rental charges, just as we did when we shifted sales tax responsibilities from small individual sellers to Amazon and similar Internet marketplaces. Hotels already collect and pay over sales taxes on the rooms they rent. By making this change, we will ensure that short-term vacation rentals follow those same rules. The executive budget also proposes to make an important change to New York's adult-use cannabis taxes. The Marijuana Taxation and Regulation Act imposed a distributor-level tax on adult-use cannabis that is measured by the THC content of cannabis products. Cannabis growers and others have complained that this potency tax is unwieldy, largely because it requires testing that is both expensive and unreliable. And they have called for the elimination of this tax. Governor Hochul recognizes the challenges posed by the potency tax, but she also understands the importance of having a distributor-level tax in order to combat the sale of illicit cannabis. The executive budget proposal would repeal the current complex potency tax and replace it with a simple price-based tax. I believe the enactment of these proposals will streamline and simplify tax compliance, thereby improving the fairness and effectiveness of New York's tax laws. At the Tax Department, we strive every day to ensure the fairness and effectiveness of our administration of the tax laws you've already enacted. Last year, the 3,800 members of Team Tax processed more than 27 million tax filings and closed 750,000 audit cases as we worked to collect $147 billion in tax revenues that support the delivery of state and local government programs and services. We issued $14.4 billion in income tax refunds to 7.4 million taxpayers, 92% in 30 days or less, and we delivered close to 1 million STAR property tax relief checks to homeowners across the state. We are able to operate at this scale only by leveraging sophisticated information technology platforms. We're now in year three of a five-year tax modernization project to improve the flexibility and interoperability of our systems, which will allow us to be more nimble as we evolve our operations to respond to changing laws and expectations and work to ensure fair and equitable outcomes for all of our current and future customers. I'm pleased to report that we are on budget and ahead of schedule. We are also pursuing parallel projects that leverage technology to improve the taxpayer experience. This year, following a successful pilot project on Long Island, we will be offering homeowners across the state the option of receiving their STAR credits by direct deposit, which is faster, easier, safer, greener, and cheaper than sending paper checks through the mail. We also recently implemented a callback feature at our call center, so taxpayers no longer have to wait on hold to get their tax questions answered. Finally, as you may have heard, the IRS is piloting the Direct File program that will allow taxpayers to prepare and file their federal tax returns for free. New York is one of four states partnering with the IRS to pilot parallel Direct File tools for state tax returns. I'm excited about this pilot project, which accepted its first New York return yesterday. I think it's the future of tax filing. At the same time, we need to be cautious as we test this program in New York. This early pilot phase of the program will not be right for all New Yorkers, because it will only be accepting limited types of income deductions and credits. We're currently testing the new tools with a very small pool of taxpayers. If this testing goes well, we expect Direct File will be a great option for about 10% of New York income taxpayers later this spring. Although this pilot will not be the right tax preparation option for most New Yorkers this year, we will learn from this pilot so we can expand it to serve all New Yorkers in the future. To conclude, I remain incredibly proud of the work we are doing at the Tax Department. I'm excited about the initiatives we are pursuing and look forward to working with you to move them forward. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. So we go to our Chair of Real Property Tax, Assemblywoman Williams.
Okay. So I have a few questions. Do I just, all at once?
Okay.
So first, the return foreclosure access to property homeowners, as you may know, the Executive proposes to amend the real property tax law to ensure that surplus funds resulting from tax foreclosure sales are returned to the former owner, thereby addressing the recent Supreme Court ruling, Tyler versus Hennepin in County, Minnesota. Two questions here. Has the Department received any feedback from local government about this proposal? And would the individual be required to endure any further litigation in order to claim their surplus?
So there was an executive budget proposal last year in anticipation of the Supreme Court's decision in Tyler v. Hennepin County. And for those who aren't familiar, New York is one of a very small number of states that historically have allowed local governments to retain the surplus when they sell property for outstanding property tax debts. And the case that was before the Supreme Court in Minnesota, I think a lot of observers expected the decision that the Supreme Court ultimately rendered, which is that retaining that surplus is an unconstitutional taking. And so there was an executive budget proposal last year to try to address and develop a foreclosure process to return those surplus funds. Our staff has engaged with local governments last year with regard to that proposal, which ultimately was not adopted. I think there was, I think a lot of folks still held hope that the Supreme Court wouldn't ultimately render the decision they rendered. And since then, the proposal has been refined. There's been a lot of engagement, primarily with local government attorneys, about the proposal. It's still a challenge for local governments. I think there are many local governments who have used the surplus funds they have retained to help fund local programs and services. And so having those funds no longer available will be a financial challenge for some local governments. But it remains the law of the land now that we have to return it, so there needs to be a process to ensure that that happens smoothly. The proposal that the Executive has put forward would provide for the payment of outstanding liens on a property from the surplus before the remaining surplus gets paid over to the property owner, much the way those outstanding liens are paid in a mortgage foreclosure process now. And I think that that's a careful balance, because we don't want to be in a position where we're returning a surplus to a property owner with those liens outstanding.
Okay. Next, to clarify the taxable status of telecommunications property, the Executive proposes to clarify that property used primarily or exclusively for the transmission of radio, television, or cable television shall not be considered taxable real property. Why is property that primarily transmits mobile Internet signals considered taxable property, but other property is not? And do you foresee this proposal having any significant local fiscal impact?
So I think beginning in 1987, cable equipment, cable, the cables for cable television and other cable transmission equipment was exempted from real property tax. And it's defined in the law as not being real property for purposes of the real property tax. These days, I think we all know that the distinction between cable service and other broadband Internet services is blurring. And the, there are a number of broadband Internet providers who have sought to avail themselves of the exemption that's on the books for cable television by saying, well, we also transmit news and radio entertainment information. There have been a number of court decisions that have shut down that argument, but the litigation persists. And that litigation creates delays in the finalization of property taxes for local communities. So we've advanced this proposal to provide certainty in the hopes of ending that litigation. It may be that this proposal is less important today, because the, there was an appellate decision from the Third Department recently that is pretty definitive on this question, and it may serve to shut down this litigation going forward. And then on the different question of why, you know, I wasn't around to do this in 1987, but my understanding is that cable was a fledgling industry at the time, and there was a desire to ensure that it was expanded. And, you know, I think there's, there are different questions to be asked here. If we, there's a policy desire to treat broadband equipment the same way we're treating cable equipment, we could either exempt both or tax both. I tend to be, you know, I have concerns about the fairness of our tax base already. And so I'm always a little suspect when we're exempting for-profit industries from property taxes. And so if it were me, I would probably tax them both. But I can understand at the same time that we have a desperate need to expand broadband access, especially in our upstate communities. And it might be that the right answer is to treat broadband the way we've historically treated cable in order to help subsidize that industry and expand it in communities where there's a very real need.
Okay. Last question. This has to do with creating a new tax abatement for rental housing construction. The Executive proposes to establish a new property tax incentive program in New York City to incentivize the construction of new rental housing contingent upon a memorandum of understanding between the largest real estate trade developer association and the largest building and construction worker trade association. The question here, why doesn't this proposal directly outline wage standards instead of leaving these standards to be determined by an MOU?
I wish I had an answer to that question, but I think it is more properly posed at the housing hearing later this afternoon. Although this exemption would sit in the real property tax law, I think it has historically been the subject of housing policy negotiations and housing policy debate, and the Tax Department was not part of the development of this proposal.
And does the Department have any idea of the fiscal impact at a local level for this?
Again, no, we weren't, we, this is, you know, I think traditionally considered to be housing policy, just as 421A is considered, was considered to be housing policy, and the Tax Department is not especially involved there.
Okay. That's it.
But you do still have a chance at the housing hearing later.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Granados.
There we go. Thank you. We've also been joined now by Senators Murray and Hoilman, and we will start with Senator Lou for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me go first on the Senate side. It's the first time. You go get a lottery ticket later. Thank you, Commissioner, for joining us today. And I have heard from constituents that the Department is improving its operations. So I concur with some of the improvements that you've highlighted in your opening testimony. I have just a couple of relatively technical questions. One has to do with the Executive's proposal to extend the sales tax exemption related to the Dodd-Frank Protection Act for another three years. Are you familiar with what I'm referring to? And the Executive is saying that there's no fiscal impact for extending this for another three years? Doesn't there have to be a fiscal impact?
I think there has to be a fiscal impact, but I don't think we can quantify it, and I don't think that it represents a change to the financial plan. And I think that that may be why there's no fiscal, you know, listed on the, on the plan. So
So the financial plan from previous years already
Right.
assumed or presumed that there would be an extension?
Right. Well, I think that, so one of the things that the Dodd-Frank Act did is it required large financial services industries to spin out many of their back office functions into separate units in order to ensure that
Aren't we losing revenue by extending another three years?
Well, right, but we didn't, we didn't have, we weren't taxing these, these particular transactions before Dodd-Frank. They were, they were in-house transactions
I understand that.
within the organization. So they weren't being, you know, we forced these, these, these taxpayers to spin out functions that now create taxable transactions within their business.
Exactly.
And so there could, there could, I mean, I'm sure that there must be a fiscal, because we're not taxing transactions that are taxable transactions, but we can't quantify those because we weren't taxing them before the change, because they weren't taxable transactions before the change.
Right, I understand. But I mean, are we the only state that's exempting these kinds of transactions from sales tax?
I have no idea, but I think
I would guess not.
we are, I think we are, we are a state that has
But you would agree that
that is the site of many of these financial institutions.
Even if you're saying that you can't quantify the amount of lost revenue, you do agree that we're losing revenue by extending it yet another three years?
I would, I would assume that these are transactions that are taxable transactions but for this exemption, and so if we were taxing them, there would be revenue
Exactly.
associated with them. But we don't know how to quantify those, because we weren't taxing them before, so we don't have a measure of them. And the financial plan from
Okay, Commissioner.
when Dodd-Frank happened, did not tax them, because they weren't taxable transactions at that time.
You're good. I'm out of time. But I think we should be, we should not continue to extend these exemptions for these big Wall Street companies at nauseam. Thank you. Oh, boy, I tried to.
So we, excuse me, we've been joined by Assemblywoman Simon, and we go to the ranker on real property, Assemblyman Miller.
Thank you, Acting Commissioner Heller, for your testimony. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
I got one question on commercial security tax credit, and I just want to thank the Governor for putting that in her, in her budget. And I wish it was a little bit more, because this problem is truly out of, out of proportion. And, you know, $3,000 tax credit's not going to go a long ways for, for a lot of small businesses, you know, with 100 people and, you know, locations. But, you know, just some clarity on some of the things that can be used for the tax credit. We got one for use of security officers. So if they're already using security officers, they can use the tax credit for the '24, '25 tax year to help pay for those?
A taxpayer needs to have incurred $12,000 in theft prevention expenses in order to qualify for the credit. And so I think that that would
Okay, so if they're already doing it, and that's nothing added?
I don't think that there's a, I don't think there's a requirement that they be new expenses.
Okay. Installation of security cameras, we're talking about if they upgrade them, that's, that's eligible?
I think that that would also be eligible.
Okay. It's perimeter security, lighting, alarm systems, access to control vaults, these are all great things, and I'm sure there's more things out there. But there's one question I have here on other appropriate anti-theft devices has determined by Division of Justice Services.
Right.
So is that an evolving list, or we don't know what it is? Or if somebody comes up with a unique
Well, I
way of crime prevention, that would be eligible?
I think that that's the reason why, you know, I think that establishing a small, finite list of eligible expenses would limit businesses that may have specific security needs that we haven't thought of. And so this is a certified credit with the Division of Criminal Justice Services, because they're well-positioned to, to take in applications and engage with businesses to see whether an expense really was a theft prevention expense that isn't on the list. But we certainly don't want to foreclose the credit for expenses that we just haven't thought of yet, or we forgot to put on the list in the law.
Okay. Okay, so the, so the tax credit, that would be, they could file during their income tax?
Yes.
And, okay. That's all, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the Senate.
Great. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Senator Weber for five minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for being here today, and I appreciate, you know, the back-and-forth that we'll have. So just a few questions in general. Obviously, we've seen, and we continue to see, the outmigration of residents from New York State over the last number of years. Seems to be continuing on that trend. I know the Executive's budget doesn't have any increase in individual corporate taxes, which I'm pleased to see, and I think that's, that's great. But, you know, I've seen some proposals and discussions, crazy proposals and discussions about, you know, the desire by some in this legislature to raise taxes on the individual earners, corporate earners, capital gains taxes, things of the sort. You know, in 2021, I think that was, was the last time we had an increase in the individual tax rates, and we continue to see the outmigration. So do you think that was a mistake? And do you, do you see that, would you see that any increase in whether individual, corporate, or any other taxes would continue that outmigration?
You know, I think it's very hard to point to causes for outmigration. I think, you know, I think we all, at some time in our lives, have moved, and I think there are lots of factors that go into that. I will say that, you know, we have a bunch of data on our website, our Tax Facts data, and one of the things that we saw is that when we increased the tax brackets for the wealthiest New Yorkers in 2021, we did see an increase in the outmigration of taxpayers in those tax brackets that, for that tax year. And it is returning to the sort of more normal levels of outmigration after that tax increase. So I read that to suggest a possibility that those taxpayers who were sensitive to that tax change left, and the taxpayers who weren't sensitive to that tax change stayed and are probably going to continue to stay.
And would you agree that if you saw a massive increase in, in those rates now or in the next couple of years, you know, knowing that we're going to have budget shortfalls over the next couple of years, that you could see a continual outmigration of wealthier taxpayers?
I certainly think that that's possible, but I have a different set of concerns about, about increasing the taxes at the highest tax brackets, and that's that I think our tax system is already over-reliant on a very small number of taxpayers. Our, the millionaires in New York comprise less than 1% of our taxpayers. They pay about half of the tax revenue. We just completed the processing of tax year 2022 returns, and we saw a $7 billion decline in income tax revenue, because the economic fortunes of that very small number of taxpayers declined that year. And a $7 billion swing from one year to the next because, is because we're incredibly reliant on the taxes at the way top of our bracket. We don't, we have an incredibly progressive tax system, but we don't have smooth progressivity across the tax brackets. And so if we, if we increase our reliance on, on the highest-earning taxpayers in order to fund recurring spending commitments, then we risk a bad year, you know? The end of the year is a bad year for capital gains, and now we don't have enough money. We have a huge budget cap, and we have to cut programs and services we care about.
Putting all of our eggs possibly in one basket will continue to have uncertainty in terms of the, you know, the expected revenue income coming in each year?
Right. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm a tax administrator. I administer the policies that are set by the legislature, and if the legislature decides that they are going to increase tax brackets, then we will administer those tax brackets. But I am also pragmatic. We have a visibility into where our tax dollars are coming from, and they are overwhelmingly coming from a very tiny sliver of New York taxpayers. And so our budgets are riding on that very small sliver. And I don't know that increasing taxes again would increase outmigration or not, but that's certainly a risk to our financial plan if we, if we continue to rely on and further our reliance on that very small handful of taxpayers who are paying the freight in New York.
Sure. And finally, one other quick question. So I've been a CPA in New York since 1994, so I've had a lot of experience with, not only IRS, but New York State Tax Departments. And now, now being in government, we get a lot of government calls to the office related to residents frustrations, trying to get through to agents within the department. Is your department back to full, full in-person, or is there still remote working? And has there been any improvements or any improvements to be made in the future related to, you know, customer service in terms of people being able to get through to a live agent?
So I think that, there are a couple of things. One, many of our call center employees are working remotely. They plug into a digital platform at the beginning of the day, and their day is entirely worked through that digital platform. So it makes very little difference whether they're sitting at a desk in the Tax Department or sitting in their, in their den at home. I think that many of the challenges reaching tax agents is related to our civil enforcement operations, where people are trying to resolve bills primarily. And we are, we have had staffing issues in that function. We have recently transferred many of those calls to our call center, which is better equipped to handle very low-level calls in order to free up staff, in order to be able to devote to devote more of their attention to actually working those cases.
And, thank you.
Thank you. We go to our ranker, Assemblyman Roth.
Good morning, Acting Commissioner. So I wanted to start with asking about the department and your, your approach, and perhaps whether you'd be, you know, amenable to having more authority in this area. There was an article, I don't know if you saw it a couple of days ago, in the New York Post regarding flavored vape products. I'm just wondering, A, when the department does go out on enforcement of products that you are able to do enforcement on, what is the approach if they were to see an item like this that is not legal but is not really within the purview of your department to enforce that?
I think we generally notify the Health Department when we, when we see flavored vape. You know, I certainly am aware that there's conversation about perhaps empowering the Tax Department or assigning to the Tax Department responsibility to enforce some of our restrictions on vapor products. We, you know, under the current law, vapor tax does not have tax enforcement provisions attached to it. We can audit a registered vapor dealer's returns, but that's really the limit of our role with vapor enforcement. But we do see vapor products, nicotine-based vapor products when we're doing tobacco inspections, and we do, we do share that information with the Health Department. We do also see cannabis vape in our cannabis enforcement, and we're seizing those products.
Do you have, do you have any opinion on whether it would make sense to give the department that authority so you could enforce all of them?
You know, I, I feel like we're busy now, but I also, you know, I understand that there may be some synergies with the tobacco enforcement we're doing now. I'm actually much more concerned about the handling of the vapor products that are being seized, because those flavored vapor products are coming in from out of the country in many cases, and we don't really know what's inside them. And so I, I'm not incredibly comfortable with the idea that a bunch of accountants are responsible for, for maintaining for years at a time, you know, vapor cartridges that have unknown chemicals inside them.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you about convenience rules. New Jersey, you may be aware, is encouraging residents to challenge their New York tax bills in a dispute over New York's rules that treat out-of-state remote workdays as New York workdays. Is the department seeing an increase in challenges over remote work?
Absolutely.
Any statistics or any?
Yeah, I don't think we have statistics. The first, the first case that's actually moving through litigation went to an administrative law judge at the Tax Appeals Tribunal in the first instance. That administrative law judge ruled for the state, and that's currently on exception to the Tax Appeals Tribunal. I don't even think we finished briefing it yet. I expect that that issue will ultimately be resolved in our Court of Appeals or in the Supreme Court. It's a significantly challenging issue. New Jersey is offering a tax credit to its residents to challenge us. Connecticut has just proposed to do the same, and in order to encourage those challenges. And they're doing that because when, when a New Jersey resident is paying taxes to New York, New Jersey has to provide a credit to the New Jersey resident for the taxes that were paid to New York, and Connecticut the same. And so that means there is actually a financial burden on our neighboring states when we're collecting those taxes on, on that, on that remote work.
Is the department, or should the legislature be taking any steps to prepare for the possibility that our convenience rules could be deemed unconstitutional as this works its way through?
You know, I, I mean, we've, we've certainly had discussions within the executive about that possibility, although I do think that a court decision is probably years away. I, you know, we are also seeing changes in the nature of work. Our, our convenience rules have been in place since the 50s. Our most recent guidance on the convenience rule was issued before the iPhone. And so we, we have, you know, it, it may be that we need to think hard as a state about where we want to be on this question, but I think it speaks more broadly to how we interact with our neighbors who rely on the New York City economy for, for their, you know, for their livelihoods.
Thank you. And then, just with the 20 seconds I have left, if, following up on the senator's questions about outmigration, if you do have any data, just in terms of the number of filers with incomes of more than $1 million per year we have now as opposed to, you know, before 2021, before that change, I'd be interested in seeing those, if you can provide them.
We have tax facts on our, if you go to our website, there's a data home, and we have tax facts there that include a lot of information about our income taxpayers, about outmigration, about our corporate taxes, our sales taxes. There's a lot of data there.
Great, thank you.
Senate?
Great. Now, next, we're going to go to Senator Birello, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. You know, you brought up, I thought, a very honest evaluation of the loss in tax revenue that we have, or income tax revenue in particular. Tom Donapoli, our controller, sounded the alarm last year. He was projecting, I think it was second quarter, a 17% decline in revenue. That turned into a 50% decline, if I'm not mistaken. And, but you brought up an important point. We're going to hear from some folks later. They're going to tell us that, you know, the rich need to pay their fair share, their fair share. I hear that a lot. But 1%, the top 1% of earners, did you say, are paying 50% of the income tax? Is that correct?
Because the top 2% of earners are paying about 50% of our taxes.
So the problem is not that riches aren't paying their fair share. The problem is we're chasing the rich out of New York State, the wealthy people. That's, that's, so that's what's lowering the, the income revenue.
I, I think that that's, it's probably not really, I don't think it's really that simple. I think that our, I mean, there's also information on our website about the composition of income of different income tranches of, of New York taxpayers. Our wealthiest taxpayers primarily generate income from under-income, including capital gains and other under-earned income. And that means that their economic fortunes from one year to the next depend on economic circumstances that we don't get to control very well. And that, I think, creates risk for us. I do think that we have seen outmigration of, of New Yorkers generally, of high-income New Yorkers included. I, we pay attention to high-income New Yorkers because primatically they're paying the taxes, and we're a tax department, so we pay attention to where the tax dollars are going. But outmigration is true across all income tranches. Most New Yorkers are moving to Florida. In general, people are moving to southern, less-regulated states, although there's certainly...
States with no income tax also.
Well, well, I think there are also states with income tax. We certainly also see outmigration to our immediate neighboring states, but I think we also all anecdotally totally know people who started their careers in the city and then moved to New Jersey.
Yeah, that's true.
I think that there's a pattern there.
I'm short on time, and I apologize to cut you off, but I want to talk about the projections that we've had recently. How, if you, you've seen projections in our budgets, and you've obviously had to deal with the reality of the actual what comes in. Can you tell us, you know, over the last, say, four years, what you've had to deal with as far as what we projected in our budget versus what actually we earned? What kind of losses are we talking about?
Well, I actually think that in the last couple of years, our projections have been conservative and then upgraded as we moved through the mid-year updates to the financial plan. I think that, for example, we thought that last year would be a very, very difficult year, but at the end of the year, the stock market rallied, and that makes it a better year for our tax receipts a little bit. And, and so one of the things I think, again, that is a real challenge is we try to project what our tax receipts are going to be, is that in the income tax, absolutely, but also in our corporate taxes, even in our sales taxes, we, we are concentrated with a, with a small number of taxpayers that are responsible for the bulk of the taxes. And so small shifts in those taxpayers can have big swings, and that's hard to predict and project for years out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree. Thank you.
We go to Assemblyman Dom Dony.
Thank you, Commissioner. So your own tax website shows 6% of millionaires leaving in 2020, and the rates falling in 2021 and 2022. Doesn't this data show the migration rate of those impacted by the 2021 tax increase declined?
I, I think if you looked at the data on our website, well, one, I think we saw, and one of the things that's challenging, I think, is we think about migration right during this particular set of years, is that we had an overlay of a COVID pandemic that hit New York City first, and New York City is one of the densest communities in the country. We didn't even understand COVID in those early days, and I think we saw a ton of outmigration that was just related to COVID. And I think it, it's intuitive to me that the people who had the most resources had the best ability to leave. And so I think that some of the migration data that's right around the pandemic, it may be, may be clouding what other factors might, might drive migration. I do think that we've seen a return of many of the people that left the city, and some of those people didn't leave the state. They left the city for upstate, and then they moved back down to the city.
And I'm sorry to jump in, but just on, on the issue of time, I very much do agree with you in, in the analysis around the impact of COVID in this period.
Sure.
And what I would just bring up is that prior to COVID, working and middle-class New Yorkers were leaving the state at a rate of four times as much of wealthiest New Yorkers. And now, once we are emerging out of this pandemic, we're seeing once again that working and middle-class New Yorkers are leaving at higher rates than the wealthy, whereas some of the analysis around this departure is attributing this to a tax increase when, in fact, it's a pandemic.
Well, I think, I think if you looked at some of the data that's, that from the most recent tax year that's posted on our website, you can see that there, that there was increasing migration in the tax brackets that were most affected by the 2021 tax increases. Those were post the COVID, the height of COVID. And so I don't think you can attribute those migration rates to COVID itself, and, but I also, I think, you know, they dropped back down afterwards. So I attribute that, that people who were sensitive left, and the people who weren't sensitive didn't leave. That's how I read it. But I think it's important to understand that we've, New York has had net migration for many, many years across all of our income tranches, including low-income New Yorkers, middle-income New Yorkers, wealthy New Yorkers. One of the things that I find...
I'm just going to jump in because I only have 30 seconds here, just to say that, given that, it is still remarkable that we have gained more than 17,500 additional millionaires over the last four years, given that existing statistic you were speaking of.
Right.
The last thing I would just say with the 20 seconds that I have is, when we're looking at an analysis of where the top 1% of earners are going, if they are leaving New York, we're seeing Connecticut, New Jersey, California. This is the statistics that we have in front of us of 28%, 27%, 22%, and then, and then 9% Florida.
Well, I think it, I think it depends on how you measure those tranches, but I think, you know, if you define a tranche as being over $200,000, then you see more movement to New Jersey, and if you define a tranche as being over $1 million, you see more movement to Florida. And so one of the things that I've come to understand about the debate about taxes and migration is that there is data to support every viewpoint out there. And I think that that's in important context.
And with that, I think we're going to go to the Senate now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Senator Hoileman for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you. Regarding outmigration, which obviously is a question that is on a few minds here, do you interview or speak to individuals who do choose to leave the state? Is there any type of analysis, other than just looking at their departure, that you deploy to understand what the impact of taxes? Because as you mentioned, there are so many other factors, including age and weather, that results in the constant outmigration to Florida that we've seen for decades among New Yorkers.
I mean, we don't, we don't systematically survey taxpayers who have left, but we also, we also, many of the taxpayers who have left...
I might suggest you do that.
Right. But we also, we, many of the taxpayers who have left, we are engaging with and ongoing audits with those taxpayers.
Yeah.
And so they tell us as we are engaging with them and their tax practitioners why they left.
Well, if you're lacking data and information...
Yeah.
I would, I would, you know...
Sure. I mean, we, we can certainly look at that. I mean, I'm not opposed to the idea of trying to do that. I don't know what response rates we'll get from the people who are no longer connected to New York taxes. I think we get better responses from people who do have an obligation to us than the people who've left, stopped having an obligation to us.
Because there is, there does seem to be conflicting information, and as, after all, I mean, you know, we have a budget surplus this year, and it runs counter to a lot of arguments before and after the pandemic that the sky is falling and taxes are too high, and we're pushing out those who have the ability to pay. And on that point, the Fiscal Policy Institute has shown that millionaire earners pay 44% of the state's income tax revenue and earn 35% of all personal income earned in New York. That, that would seem somewhat proportionate, correct?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, so I, I don't, I don't have an opinion about whether they're paying their fair share or not their fair share. That's a policy decision that the Tax Department doesn't get to make, but I do know that we're heavily reliant on that upper tranche. And again, we have updated data through tax year 22 that just came, we just, we were able to put that out last week, maybe. It's, you know, because we finished the, we got 2022 returns in October, so we pushed, we, as we finish processing that, we can roll out 22. But that data is always retrospective. I would also note that we have budget surpluses because we budgeted conservatively against lower revenue expectations. And then when the revenue expectations turned out to be rosier, although not rosy, they are rosier than we originally projected. And I think that that's part of what's tricky about trying to project our tax receipts when our tax receipts are reliant on the economic fortunes of a handful of people.
She's masterful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just had a brief follow-up on a question that Chair Williams posed, and it's about the creation of the new tax abatement for rental construction housing.
Sure.
This, in my opinion, I believe this is exactly where tax policy should be focused on rentals, because that's where the demand is. But I wanted to deep down, dig deep down more about the abatement itself. How, like, how deep is the abatement? For how long does it last? Are there targeted levels of affordability in the housing that we are asking folks to create? Could you tell us more mechanically about how this abatement would work?
I actually can't. I wish I could, but I, this is a housing policy initiative.
But it's also tax policy that you would have to administer and...
We, we, the Tax Department actually would not have a role in administering this tax policy. It would be in role, it would be a real property tax abatement administered by New York City. And traditionally, the real property tax abatements related to housing are negotiated at the housing table, so I suspect that Commissioner Vesnovskis will, will be better positioned to answer questions about these particular proposals.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senate?
Next, we'll hear from Senator Murray, three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner, I'm going to change scenes here and move to the film tax credit. So your department actually recently released a study that was commissioned by the Commission Two, the PFM Group.
Yes.
I think it was like 359 pages, looking at the major tax incentives that have been given out, the different programs. Looked like the Excelsior job program did pretty good, but the film tax credit looks like an abysmal failure here. It says that the investment returns 31 cents on the dollar. Now, with such a low return on investment, wouldn't it be wise maybe to stop this program, get that revenue, revenue in, and maybe recoup some of that money for, say, schools? Where we've, we've cut, the governor's proposing cutting funding to schools, or maybe things, programs like the Healthy Meals for All that would cost us about $90 million. The legislature last year increased this tax credit, a tax credit that obviously is failing, from $520 million to $700 million. Why would we continue with a program that's returning 31 cents on the dollar?
I think that that's a question for the legislature. I certainly don't think that the Tax Department can answer that question. I will say a couple of things about that study. The Tax Department was assigned the responsibility for commissioning and overseeing the development of that study, and I'm proud to say that we were actually independent. It is an independent study. We did not reach in in any way into the analysis that was, we've done. I think the limits of our involvement was working to make the final report accessible for people with visual impairments on the web. The, a couple of notes, though. One, I think the consultants, by their own admission, took a very conservative approach to measuring return on investment, and were only looking at the dollar-for-dollar state return on, in state-dollar terms, even though the report does develop projections for county and local taxes that are also the result of those incentives, and that it's worth taking a look at the all-in numbers for, to get, I think, a broader picture of, of the return on investment.
I'm going to interrupt you there.
Yes.
Don't think it's time, but there, there was another study previously that others are pointing to, saying that, oh, it's a wonderful program, but that study, and, and sort of like your comment earlier, that, you know, we, we adjust the statistics to make whatever argument fits, but this study seems to be much more in-depth. The study previously was like a 16-page study that, that said basically, if there was no film tax credit, no jobs would have been created, which is absurd. This one takes a more, I think, realistic approach to this, but it, again, it shows that the investment is just, the return on investment is just not there. Would you, would you agree with that analysis based on the information in this report?
I think that the report as commentary on the film credit, as with most of the credits it, it looked at, was that in addition to... it looked at, was that in addition to the direct dollar-for-dollar return on investment, there are also quantitative benefits for each of those, of each of those incentives. Ultimately, whether or not those incentives are the right incentives for New York are decisions that the Tax Department will administer, but we don't decide.
Thank you, Commissioner. Assembly?
Assemblyman Bronstein.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, my colleague, Mr. Ra, went over my concerns about the shift to working from home.
Sure.
I appreciate that you recognize that that's a challenge that we need to confront as the legal process plays out. My other question is, obviously, we're all concerned about outmigration of the tax base. In your opinion, has the cap on the state and local tax deduction had any impact on migration?
You know, we started looking at migration patterns when that cap was put in place, and I think that we do see some changes in outmigration behavior that followed the institution of that cap. I think as with our specific tax rates and tax brackets, it's very difficult to tease out whether the state and local deduction has an impact. I think it's also especially difficult now because I think the taxpayers who are most impacted by the cap on state and local tax deductions now have the opportunity to, many of them have the opportunity to leverage the PTAP program to help reduce their state tax liabilities. And so I think that changes the picture for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Senator O'Mara for five minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner. I've got a couple of questions on the change to the cannabis tax. But first of all, where is the cannabis tax receipts compared to what was projected?
You know, I don't have the specific numbers offhand, but they are obviously much lower than originally projected because we just haven't seen the rollout that we originally anticipated. You know, I think that, you know, the state has prevailed in some of the more recent legal challenges and that we're in a position to start rolling out licenses faster. And I remain of the belief that the best way to combat the illegal market is to have a robust legal market. So I'm excited that we seem to be gaining momentum on the legal, on the legal stores.
Very slowly gaining momentum, in my opinion. And really getting no traction on, frankly, eliminating the illegal sticker shops that are out there, at least in communities that I represent. It's very embarrassing from where I sit as a state legislator, when I'm in my district and people want to know what is going on. I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing, the whole program. To change, to get away from the THC-level taxing, what's that gonna, impact gonna be to tax receipts from cannabis overall?
You know, my, you know, so one, I think that the movement from the THC tax to a price-based tax will be an incredibly important simplification of the tax because, especially for cannabis growers who are selling flower, cannabis flower, every batch has to be tested, and the testing is really expensive, hard to get, and unreliable. And so that makes the taxing really unpredictable.
Don't they have to label the THC content on it?
They do, right, absolutely.
Like liquor has a proof on it, so that still has to be appropriately labeled. So why isn't it taxed on, just simply taxed on what it's labeled as? And if there's periodic testing and it proves to be different, then you change the label and the tax level changes.
I think that that's, you know, I, you know, I think I made that argument in a hearing on cannabis in November. But I also recognize that the testing is very difficult to get, and it's incredibly expensive, and then we know that it's not very reliable. So that combination, I think, is not a great way to administer taxes. And we have the opportunity to, you know, that was the original idea when we first legalized adult-use cannabis in New York. And we've had a few years of experience and have the opportunity to move to a different tax structure. I think that now is the time to make that move as the, as the legal industry is getting going. And, you know, I think that in terms of the revenue-
I think changing before we really have the market established doesn't make sense. I mean, there was a reason it was put in in the first place, but I want to move on from the cannabis in the remaining time I have on taxes on manufacturers. And I forget how many years ago it was, six, eight years ago, we eliminated the franchise taxes on C corporation manufacturers. And there's proposals out there that I have and others have to eliminate that on the pass-through entities, whether it's a partnership, an LLC, subchapter S corporation. Have you looked in, from your perspective as Commissioner of the Tax Department, what impact that would be and how could that feasibly be done to give a further break to the smaller manufacturers in the state? Because my understanding is they make up like 75% of the manufacturing entities in the state, and we certainly, I think, want to foster manufacturing in New York State.
Well, certainly, I think we see the, you know, changes in the patterns of business formation over, you know, historically, you know, from C corporations as new businesses are increasingly structured as flow-through entities. I'm aware that there are proposals to try to bring the same kind of tax relief to flow-through manufacturers as we have for C corp manufacturers. At the Tax Department, that makes us nervous, and that's because it's hard to tell what's a manufacturer. And it's hard for us, from where we sit on a tax filing, to determine whether that entity was a manufacturer or not. We have a little bit more, the group of C corp manufacturers is, at this point, fairly well-understood, but the flow-through manufacturers is a much more unwieldy pool. And so if we're going to move in that direction, I would encourage the legislature to consider working with the SD to have certified manufacturers. And if we have certified manufacturers, we have people with expertise and, you know, able to determine whether this entity is a manufacturer that should get a tax break.
So, but thank you, I think we should prioritize our manufacturers.
Thank you.
They should work economy. Thank you.
Assembly?
Hello. So I have just a couple of short questions. The, it was brought up, I think, by Assemblyman Miller, the commercial security tax credit. And a number of my colleagues are concerned that the $12,000, that both the $12,000 spending before the credit takes in and the 100 or less employees will really prevent a lot of the small individual businesses from being able to take advantage of this credit. And I was just wondering if you had thoughts on why the $12,000 limit, or kick-in really, was chosen and why up to 100 employees? And your thoughts on whether to have perhaps a two-tier system for smaller individual businesses that maybe have only five, seven, or 10 employees, and they'll never get to that $12,000 limit? And some of those sort of mom-and-pop stores that are having a lot of issues won't be able to take advantage of this credit.
You know, my understanding is that the 100-employee cap was established because that's how we define small businesses in economic development terms. And I think ESD and others look at that as being a threshold for small businesses. And I think it's also, for many of, particularly our small retail businesses, their payrolls, you know, I may go into the store and only see three people, but most of those, most of those employees are part-time employees, and there's a rotation of part-time employees, and the actual employee count is higher. In terms of the spending cap, you know, I think that this is, the intention here, I think, was to provide cost sharing to help incentivize the investment in these kinds of security initiatives to help prevent retail theft without absorbing all of the cost of those initiatives. And I think that the, essentially, a 25% cost sharing is what was the original proposal. I expect this will get negotiated at the table, and there may be some variation in that in the ultimate credit. But I think this is one part of a larger series of initiatives that the governor has proposed to try to address the retail theft that we're seeing. And, you know, it's an important piece, but it's only one piece of a larger series of proposals that the state is undertaking in order to try to address this growing scourge.
And thank you for that answer. You know, we've heard people talk about how New York State is gaining millionaires. I assume that it's not a number of millionaires moving into New York State, but people who have been taxpayers, who have been below that amount as the economy has improved for some people, that they are now over the million-dollar income threshold where before they were taxpayers below $1 million. Is that a correct assumption?
That's actually right on target. We do not see in-migration, meaningful in-migration of millionaires into New York. What we, you know, we have, we're talking first, you know, when we're talking about millionaires, we're talking about income millionaires, not wealth millionaires. We have people who have homes that are worth $1 million, but they don't have income of $1 million a year. And a large number of them, they, they're just above $1 million this year, they're just below $1 million next year. It's a great capital gains year, it was a good bonus year, they're above $1 million. The next year, their bonus is down, and they're below $1 million. And so we see that fluctuation. We also see a pattern that has been a longstanding pattern in New York of people who make their fortune in New York and then retire to Florida. And that's not new. People who started out in a business and by the time they retired, that business was generating $1 million a year, and then they leave. I think that we see all of those kinds of patterns. The one thing I think that's incredibly important to keep in mind, though, as we think about migration and outmigration, is that when you look at the in-migration, the outmigration from New York and the outmigration from Florida, they aren't actually all that different. The difference is that people are moving to Florida and people are not moving to New York. Millionaires aren't moving to New York, lower-income people aren't moving to New York. That doesn't surprise me. The vacancy rate in New York City is at historic lows, you can't get an apartment in New York. But we aren't seeing the in-migration that balances the outmigration we see every year. In other states, that in-migration and outmigration is more balanced. Or in the case of Florida, the in-migration vastly overwhelms the outmigration from Florida. But the numbers aren't all that different. The number leaving Florida, the number leaving New York, it's within, you know, some years were above, some years were below. It's not, that's not where the problem is. The problem is that we aren't bringing people in to replace the people who are leaving.
Thank you. And just to follow up on Senator O'Mara's questions about the inspections of the illegal cannabis, do you have enough staff to do those inspections? And are, I guess, just that question.
I think if we had more peace officers, we would be able to do more inspections, and we are working to grow our peace officer class. I was just at a peace officer graduation two weeks ago, and, you know, we're bringing on another new class of peace officers. But it takes time to recruit and train new peace officers. And so we're moving through that process expeditiously in order to sort of grow the ranks, because we not only are doing cannabis enforcement, we're still also doing tobacco enforcement. And tobacco, we have the highest tobacco taxes in the country, and so the incentive to bring in untaxed tobacco is enormous. And so we can't stop doing tobacco enforcement while we undertake cannabis enforcement. And so we are working to grow our ranks. I was incredibly excited by the graduation of that new class. We have a great new team of people coming on board, and we're gonna be continuing to recruit new peace officers to do that work.
Thank you. Thank you for your responses to the Senate.
Okay, we're done on our side, so I'll take some time for some questions. Commissioner, I want to follow up on what I guess has been the theme of today so far on this question of migration, in-migration, not-migration, tax code, et cetera. You know, I guess the first thing I'll ask or I'll start with is, you know, there does seem to be, based on the data on the department's website, as well as, you know, in the press reported analysis of that data, a net increase in about 15,000 millionaire filers in the same period that we lost about 2,500 millionaire filers. For whatever reason, they retire, they move, COVID, et cetera. So we have seen an increase in those, in the number of people who are supporting that tax base. I think that's an important fact to just keep in mind. Whether someone is coming in here or is already here and they're paying arguably their fair share or part of their fair share, I think is ultimately the most important question for our financial plan, right? Whether you are a former Wisconsin resident who's paying the tax in New York, or you're a New Yorker who's done very well, and now you're paying that tax, it's still part of our broader plan. And so arguably, at the end of the day, whether you're coming from somewhere else or you're here and you're doing well, we still want you to be paying your fair share. And, you know, you had kind of alluded to, you know, that 1% pay 50%, and that the highest earners are already doing significantly, are paying significantly higher share of their taxes, and that when they don't do well, we all do less well. But the opposite's also true, right? When they do very well, we all do very well, correct? And, you know, nine months ago, we were looking at a $9 billion deficit. Then in October, it was a $4 billion. Now we have a balanced budget. Budget Department says it's because of the stock market, which grew 24% last year. So when the well-to-do are doing well, it benefits everyone. So isn't that an argument for, you know, we should not make changes to lessen the burden that is being, that is being asked of the most privileged and wealthiest New Yorkers?
Well, first, I'm not aware of any proposals to lessen the burden on the people who are doing well.
Well, it's been alluded to that people should.
You know, the conversation I have heard is about proposals to increase that burden. You know, I'm a New Yorker, I want people to all pay their fair share, I believe in progressive taxes. New York is a high-tax, high-spend state, and I'm proud of that. You know, there are states in other parts of the country that do not provide services to their residents, and I'm pleased that we step up to provide services to people who need assistance. That, I don't think, is the question. I think for me, separate from whether or not people are paying their fair share, however one defines fairness, I think the real question is built into your question. And that's what, whether our financial plan is stable from one year to the next when we're funding recurring expenditures. And so if-
And on that point, Commissioner, so, you know, I understand that we want to have as smooth a kind of financial plan as possible, even with the increases over the last couple of years that we've seen in spending, education spending, childcare spending, healthcare spending, et cetera. You know, at the same time, we've been managed to stock away $20 billion, which we didn't have two, three years ago. So we've been able to pay for the things we need to pay for, arguably, maybe not pay for enough of the things we need to pay for, while still putting away a significant number of reserves based on the current structure of the tax system and tax code. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, why would we, or why should we not continue, continue down that road and continue to structure our taxes in that way? And perhaps arguably, try to raise a little bit more to pay for those things that are remaining unmet needs that we're facing right now?
Well, I think there are a couple of different things there. One, I think that we were all surprised by the strength of the stock market in the pandemic. I think that economists widely attribute that to the infusion of federal funds into the economy to support the economy, and that left us with surprisingly strong revenues during some of our darkest times. And I'm glad to see that we were able to put a lot of those resources into reserves because it could, that could have been a very different story, and I think a lot of us feared it would be a very different story. And so having reserves in place to help us steel ourselves against another disaster like that, another crisis like that, I think is incredibly important. But again, I think the issue is, when we have excess resources, there are ways to do one-time spending to spend those additional resources. I mean, we've done supplemental earned income tax credits, supplemental dependent care credits, additional homeowner rebate credits, that are not recurring expenses but can help us do revenue sharing to our lower-income residents that are distributing some of that unanticipated fund balance that we have. There are ways that we can do that that don't create recurring expenditures when we, when we're fortunate enough to have that. But when we build our school aid formula on revenues that are uncertain, then we have problems in the next year and how we go about funding that in the future. And I think that that's true across our spending categories.
And so I appreciate that, I understand. I would say that that's one of the reasons why we have the reserves, to kind of allow us to smooth out, right? Which is why it's there.
True.
I want to just get clarity, when you say that the top 1% pays 50%, is that 50% of the income taxes? Or is that 50% of the entire tax levied on individuals?
So one, I would want to be clear, I think we say about 2% of the taxpayers, the top 200,000 taxpayers.
Earlier, I think you said 1%.
No, well, I think New York millionaires are less than 1%.
Okay.
But that top 200, we have about 84,000 millionaires in New York. But if you, if you move to the top 2%, which is those 84,000 millionaires plus people who are just below $1 million, you get to that, essentially, that 2% number, and they pay about half. It does shift a little bit from one-
Half of the personal income tax?
Half of the personal income tax.
Okay.
But we also can see- But we also can see that the, the largest corporate taxpayers pay a disproportionate amount of corporate taxes. We see that a small handful of sales tax vendors are responsible for most sales tax revenue. We do have concentration in our, in our key taxes.
And on the, looking at, for example, at the capital gains tax, which arguably is what gave us a big boost, because we tax capital gains as income here, what kind of carried us from the red to the black, what percentage of the capital gains tax is paid by the people in the top 2%? Or the, or the millionaire class and above?
Oh, I think it's overwhelmingly. I mean, I, I don't know that number offhand. We'd have to, we'd have to do some serious analysis within our tax returns in order to try to pull that out. But, but we do see that different, we, we've looked at different wealth sources for income sources by income tranche, and you can see that it's overwhelmingly under earned income amongst our wealthiest taxpayers.
All right. Thank you. I want to shift to another topic here. In the governor's proposal, Part A, she proposes to extend the limitation on charitable deductions at 25% of, of the federal limit. Otherwise, you shoot up to 50, 50%. And I guess my first question is, do we know, we have an analysis, has your department done an analysis, what the, what the revenue gain to the state would be if we eliminated that deduction entirely? Because I think they're projecting 175 million increased revenue next year and beyond by continuing that-
I think it may be 350 million full year. I mean, it's a substantial, you know, the reduction in this deduction is a substantial impact on, on our revenue stream. I don't know offhand what it would be if we eliminated the charitable deduction at all, completely for these taxpayers.
I think the proposal is just for people with incomes over $10 million. So we're talking about, as I, as I read the, the proposal, right? So people making $10 million or above get to deduct 25% of their charitable contributions on their state tax return.
We, we, right, we, we have a limit, we have a permanent limitation of 50%, and then we're extending the highest dollar taxpayers for, that, the reduction to 25% for our highest dollar taxpayers. I don't know what it would look like if we completely eliminated the charitable deduction for those taxpayers. I think we could certainly do that, work that up and get that to you. I don't know that offhand. I do also know that, you know, charitable contributions in New York are important to sustain some of our service providers in New York. And so I think that, you know, I don't know where the balance is, where the value of the federal deduction, which may be limited by the alternative minimum tax at the federal level for some of our, these donors, what the trade-off is for that.
Sure.
I would hope that they're philanthropic regardless of their tax, the tax status of their donations, but I don't know that.
I guess the question is, what is the public policy rationale for subsidizing charitable donations of multimillionaires, right? Like, we want people to be able to donate to their local YMCA, and to their local Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and to the food bank, and we want, you know, folks to be able to do that. But if you are a multimillionaire, I guess I question what the public policy rationale is of subsidizing your, your largesse to the libraries and the parks, which arguably wouldn't need that donations if we had fully funded them through tax revenue in the first place. So I don't know if you can speak to the public policy rationale of, I'm glad we're trying to maintain what we currently have, but why not do something different?
You know, I can't speak to the public policy rationale, because it's set by you, not by me.
Or in the governor's proposal in this case.
Right, right. Well, the governor's proposal in this case is to extend, you know, sort of a, what's now become a longstanding limitation. I would also, you know, I think we could ask the question of whether we, as a matter of public policy, want to, want to have deductions for charitable contributions at all for any level. But I think our wealthiest taxpayers also make the largest donations, and that that's part of a, of a, of a, of a web of nonprofits that play an important role in our economy and in our communities.
Great. Thank you. I think we have-
We have one more question on, question on this, on the Assembly side. Assemblywoman Simon.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Of course.
Actually, I understood most of it, which is good, because the last time I understood anything on tax, it was my tax class.
You're not alone.
As soon as the final was over, I forgot it. So I have a couple of questions about some proposals that the governor has, and whether you've been part of this analysis and what that might be.
Mm-hmm.
So one is authorize tax incentive benefits for converting commercial property into affordable housing. And with an 80-20 split, so that 20% would be affordable, a subset of that would be more deeply affordable. And for the benefit period, which, not clear what that is. But, you know, were you involved in your office in figuring that out?
No.
Okay, so you don't have any analysis about whether a better, a different split, like 25-75, might be more appropriate, or just as justifiably, justifiable financially?
Yeah, I, I really don't. I last worked on housing policy, you know, 12 years ago, 13 years ago. I, I really don't have a view there, or any knowledge base there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So we go back to the Senate?
There we go. Thank you, Commissioner. I have just a couple of quick follow-ups in my remaining three minutes. I want to talk about the direct file pilot. Very excited by this. As you know, I wrote you a letter a couple of months ago about this. I think it's great. And I think it's the, the future of, of tax collection administration. You had mentioned that the pilot's going to start with a limited number of credits and exemptions. Can you kind of expand on that a little bit? Which, what are the limited credits and exemptions that are going to be part of that initial pilot?
So the pilot, in its first instance, is, is being driven by the IRS. And they've set some limitations on the types of income deductions and credits that are, will be administered at the federal pilot. I think you can't have more than $1,500 of interest income. You can't, you have to be taking the standard deduction. You can't be itemizing. They are allowing the earned income tax credit and the child credit. In New York, we are following along on that. And so, because we're, we're a parallel filing tool, so we are, we are following the IRS's limitations around that. So if you were taking an exotic credit, you can't file. If you have itemized deductions, you can't use this tool.
Got it.
This year.
Gotcha.
I mean, I expect that we'll be able to roll it out next year. One of the things that we are, we want to be careful about is to make sure that taxpayers who are using these tools understand whether they're, whether the tool is right for them. So it supports New York City income tax, but the pilot does not support Yonkers income tax. So this is not the right solution for residents of Yonkers this year.
Gotcha.
It will be next year.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. And do you anticipate, or can you anticipate, you know, other jurisdictions that have, other countries, I should say, that have kind of taken the step in direct file, they kind of go one step further, and they actually mail, or they send their taxpayers or their residents pre-filled tax returns ultimately, just for certification and as part of the electronic system? Do you see that being kind of the next step in our process here, assuming we get through the pilot and we're able to, you know, work out the kinks and do it successfully?
I think we have a lot of work to do before we can get there. Our own internal analysis, you know, so one of the issues that often drives an exception in our processing work is a discrepancy between what a taxpayer reports on their tax return as they're withholding, and what the employer reports as having withheld for that employee. And that discrepancy triggers questions to the taxpayer about that, about that difference. Our own internal work suggests that in almost every case, it's a problem on the employer's side in the reporting, not a problem on the employee's side on the reporting. But we don't know there's a discrepancy until we're working the individual return. And so individual taxpayers sort of bear the brunt of working through the correction of those errors. And we've been doing a lot of work with employers to try to improve the payroll reporting and the withholding reporting that they're doing. And if we can get to a place where we feel that that's reliable, then we could use that to generate pre-filled returns. But right now, we have significant doubts about the reliability of the data we start with.
Gotcha. Well, thank you very much. Hopefully, we can see that to completion in the future. Thank you.
Sure.
So I think we are finished with the questions. A record, maybe?
It's a record. It is a record. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Heller, for being here. So next, we will be having a panel that, to make presentations. Again, it'll be three minutes each, and then members can ask questions. So the panel is, if you could come forward, take a chair. We have to have some more chairs, though. The first four, we're playing musical, the first four get a chair. New York State Assessors Association, Warren Wheeler, Fiscal Policy Institute, Nathan Gustoff, New York Communities for Change, James Ennis, Invest in Our New York, Carolyn Martinez, Class, Citizens Action of New York, Rebecca Gerard, and Strong Convy for All Coalition, Michael Kink. So just again, a reminder for all of you, as you take your, your seats, that your testimony has been received, distributed to all of the members here, as well as members from the, these committees who are not here, and have been, have been, or will be, I think, already posted by the Senate, and I believe the Assembly also, or shortly by the Assembly. And after all of you have made your presentations, there'll be opportunity for members to ask questions. And I know the mics are a little bit, they're these new mics, so just if whoever is speaking could just use the, make sure that your mic is on. And we start with Warren Wheeler.
Good morning. Thank you. In the accordance of time, I will get right to it. So everybody has the, our written testimony from the New York State Assessors Association. My name is Warren Wheeler, and I'm the executive director. So thank you very much for this opportunity today. First up, I'd like to show our support for Part M of the budget, clarifying the telecommunications assessment ceiling. The one part that we would respectfully request again is that the, there's some amendment in there that allows for these companies to provide inventory. It's very important that we get this inventory. Right now, we're not afforded that inventory, and so it's very difficult for us to maintain any kind of assessment information when the inventory is not provided. It's very similar, if you would think about it, as asking a property owner, we're standing there, and the house is behind a curtain, and we have to rely on the property owner to tell us what's there. All other property, we have the accessibility of going and visiting and obtaining the inventory. This, these types of properties, we do not. Also, excuse me, I would like to mention support for A 1292 and S 04065. It's the, we call the condo bill. For those of you who have been here for a while, you understand that we've been looking for a condo bill for quite some time. Last year, there was a companion bill that was passed for Greenberg. And we would also like to throw our support in for a condo bill that is at local option. So we feel that, right now, there's a, there's a huge discrepancy between the way condominiums and cooperatives are treated in relationship to their single-family counterparts. And while the bill originally may have been created to, you know, for affordable housing, or something along those lines, it's definitely become what we refer to as a loophole. And it's being used, the homes that are being built are not in the affordable homes category. And I think that's all I got for right now. So I don't want to take any more of your time, so I would entertain any questions.
Great. Thank you. So we move on to Fiscal Policy Institute?
Gotcha. All right. So, thank you to the committee. My name is Nathan Gustoff. I'm the executive director of the Fiscal Policy Institute. We're a nonpartisan think tank that studies state tax and budget policy. We'd say the state's revenue needs at this point are apparent, given the executive budget's proposed cuts to foundation aid, Medicaid, and the absence of new initiatives in housing and climate investment. The question for this committee is to what extent the state can raise additional revenue through taxes to meet those needs. But first, I want to speak to some of the issues that have come up today, and that always come up in terms of the viability of raising revenue for the state's population and fiscal base. So the Fiscal Policy Institute conducted a detailed study that you may have seen. We released it in the fall. It was a statistical overview of census data, federal tax data, and state tax data, going back to 2015, to see whether there's any truth to these claims of taxpayer outmigration. We found that in normal years, the top 1% of income earners typically move out of the state at about 1/4th of the rate of all other income groups. Further, we found that when those high earners do move out of the state, they typically move to states like New Jersey and California that have very comparable tax structures to our own. And finally, we looked statistically at the two most recent tax increases in 2017 and 2021, to see if that changed migration behavior based on part-year tax returns. And we found that they generally did not. The other common argument that we've heard today is that there's that small share of taxpayers who pay too much of the state's income tax revenues. But as Senator Hoilman noted, they earn about 1/3 of all income earned in the state while paying about 44% of all income tax revenue to the state. So that's proportionate, reflecting a mild degree of progressivity in the state's tax structure. We also have a fairly large stock of these high earners that's growing, suggesting that we have ongoing fiscal stability for that high end of the tax base. If you look at the actual structure of the state's taxes, there's considerable room to raise income tax rates at the top in particular, and to repair certain peculiarities of our progressivity. Our top tax rate is 10.9%. New Jersey's top income tax rate is 10.8%. California's is 13.3%. But New York imposes that top rate on people who make over $25 million a year. In New Jersey and California, they impose their top rates on people who make over $1 million a year. So we are fairly skewed in the structure of our top brackets. There are other stout tax policy options for addressing these revenue needs, including looking at higher tax rates on capital gains, possibly structured as a higher net investment income tax rate, which was done in Minnesota, and that's modeled on a federal policy that is used to pay for the Affordable Care Act. There's also a lot that needs to be done in corporate and business taxation, in part due to the fact that most businesses are not structured as corporations, and so they don't pay the corporate tax. It's about 95% of businesses today are LLCs and partnerships. It's worth considering doing a business entity profits tax that would apply across the whole field of businesses. Thank you.
New York Communities for Change?
How you doing? My name is James Ennis, and I come before you on behalf of New York Communities for Change. We are one of the largest community-based organizations in the country with over 20,000 members in New York City and Long Island. We bring neighbors together to help build community through power, direct action, legislative advocacy, and community organizing. We organize in low-income communities of color, and for the 98% of New Yorkers who haven't been mentioned in this hearing today. New York is staring down a catastrophe. Orange skies, flooded streets, deadly blizzards, and unbreathable air are the new reality. Climate migration is bringing more families to New York who need the same things that our communities need. And if we don't cut climate heating pollution by at least 40% in the next six years, things will get even worse. And on top of that, New York is facing a profound housing emergency. It's hard to overstate the urgency. 2030 is five years away, and the climate science is near, is clear. Failure to reduce climate heating pollution by 40% will guarantee catastrophe both locally and globally. In order to cut pollution and protect our communities, we need to make it rain. But not climate rain, money rain. That's right. We need historic investments into our communities. And the good news is, we have plenty of money in the state to make that happen. New York can rise to the occasion of these unprecedented times that we're living in and lead our nation in solutions at the scale of the crisis that we are facing right now. Or we can just allow them to spiral out of control. At the same time of all of this, homeownership is increasingly out of reach for most New Yorkers, with more families being unable to afford their rent. Many, many more are living in substandard, low-quality housing. As climate disasters displace millions of climate refugees northward, an elevated number of asylum seekers are seek, are making the housing shortage in New York even more acute. Within just New York City, 40% of residents are facing displacement due to rising sea levels. It's a race to the bottom, and it does not have to be this way. That's why New York Communities for Change supports the Invest in Our New York package, which, if passed, will raise tens of billions of dollars through the combination of personal intact, personal income tax increases on the top 5% of earners, corporate tax reforms targeting the most profitable corporations, which is fewer than the top 1% of them. targeting the most profitable corporations, which is fewer than the top 1% of them, addressing loopholes that allow millionaires and billionaires to shield their wealth from tax liability. The Senate and Assembly must listen to the 73% of New Yorkers who support raising taxes on the rich, and we must act today. Together, we can transform our state into a place where everyone can live, breathe clean air, and afford beautiful, safe, fossil-free homes. Let's do it together, and for everybody that celebrates, have a Happy Love Day.
Thank, thank you. So now, Invest in Our New York?
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Martinez Class, and I am the campaign manager for the Invest in Our New York campaign. The Invest in Our New York campaign is an unprecedented campaign for a more just economy, fighting through the state budget process. We have a two-pronged approach. We are arguing for the need for critical investments in housing, infrastructure, healthcare, and more, while advocating for those investments to be paid for through increased taxes on New York's millionaires, billionaires, and wealthiest corporations. You all have my testimony, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna reiterate what's on there. I'm gonna respond directly, though, to some of the things that have been raised. So one, proposals that are part of the Invest in Our New York agenda and the broader concept of raising taxes has been described as crazy through the course of this conversation. And to that, I'm gonna say that those proposals have the support of 2/3 of New Yorkers, regardless of political affiliation, whether rural, suburban, or in major urban areas in our state. And so that is a majority support for those proposals. The budget today has been described as responsible. I don't know in what universe a budget that cuts education, healthcare, and fails to fund and meet the moment we're in, in terms of the housing crisis, can be deemed responsible. And we know that fundamentally, our budgets are documents that are reflections of our priorities as a state. This is a budget that will further inequity. New York is the most unequal place in the country. Affordability has, like, New York is the most unaffordable place in the country. Wages have not kept the pace despite the increase in the last year. And we know New Yorkers are in need, and so I just want to emphasize how critical it is to make deep and lasting, serious transformative investments in our social safety net for working-class people. And we've talked a lot about immigration. The thing that hasn't been raised is that the comptroller, think tanks, everyone's aligned that the people likeliest to leave our state are working-class people. People, in the comptroller's report in December 2023, he named that people who are likeliest to leave the state were people earning less than $500,000 a year. Those people have not been impacted by tax increases in terms of the proposals we've advocated and pushed forward. And so it really speaks to the need to make investments in affordability and the urgency surrounding that right now. And we agree with, like, what's been named around the need for more progressive, more progressivity in the way our income tax is structured. And so to that, we'd say, there's a Meeks-Jackson bill that we hope you will take under consideration for one-house budget proposals and in the final budget. And we would advocate for diversifying our sources of revenue, including by taxing wealth through proposals to tax capital gains, inheritances, as well as the billionaire's tax carried by Senator Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Citizens Action of New York?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I will, for the sake of brevity, because you also have the written testimony, just say plus one, instead of going into detail to the information that has been shared about both the popularity of progressive taxation and the impact of New Yorkers and who's leaving and who's not leaving, right? Who's suffering and who's benefiting? So I will, I will just plus one that and, and really spend my time talking about why the sum of money that we propose is vitally necessary. Budgets are moral documents, and they reflect the choices, right, of the governor and the legislature in terms of who they're prioritizing. And so this truly is a decision. Are we, are we prioritizing the wealthiest New Yorkers, who will be fine if they pay a little more? Or are we prioritizing struggling, low- and moderate-income families who are already barely surviving and certainly cannot afford to make any more cuts or lose any more resources? And so certainly, the, the cuts that have been proposed to Medicaid, to foundation aid are wholly unacceptable, and there's needs and gaps to be filled on top of that, right? So I'm gonna mention a few of those. When we think about healthcare, healthcare remains unaffordable for many New Yorkers. And in fact, over 740,000 New Yorkers have medical debt in collections. That is a moral failure of this state. Healthcare should be considered by everyone a human right, and, and so that has to be addressed. We support the increase in the hospital financial assistance and moving that threshold for eligibility up from 300% of the federal poverty limit to 600%. We support the governor's solution idea for cost sharing on insulin, and we certainly vehemently push back on any cuts to Medicaid. Through the Invest in Our New York package, that could be accomplished, and we could certainly make a dent in this, in this ever-escalating and unsustainable housing crisis that we're in. So we know that working-class families are being driven out of the state due to affordability. To that end, we must have the Housing Access voucher program. We must have legislation to create the Social Housing Development Authority, to, to have long-term fixes to this crisis. And of course, none of these solutions will be tenable or effective without good cause tenant protections. In terms of climate, I will also just plus one. We are in no way planning for the funding to meet the mandates of CLCPA. We support the Climate Change Superfund Act, and we support using Ioni funding to meet those mandates, which we are not on schedule to meet. In terms of child, there's, you can read the testimony, multiple needs, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. And to close out this panel, Strong Economy for All Coalition, Michael Kink.
I'm gonna give you mine.
There we go. Thank you. Michael Kink, Executive Director of the Strong Economy for All Coalition. We're a coalition of labor unions and community groups working together for economic, social, and racial justice. We support the five-bill package that the Invest in Our New York campaign has put together to tax high incomes, the most profitable corporations, and the most extreme wealth. The tax increases that Invest in Our New York put forward and that the legislature passed in 2021 have been successful. According to the comptroller, they've raised $10 billion more than predicted, and they've added to that cash stockpile. The state is not only sitting on $20 billion in reserve funds, there's another $10 billion in unspent money in the, in the checking account. There's essentially a $30 billion reserve right now, in a year when we're facing an affordability crisis. The facts are the facts. FBI has put it out, the people that are moving are low-income and working-class New Yorkers. The front page headline of the New York Times said, "New York's millionaire class is growing. Others are leaving." Those kinds of headlines and those kinds of studies are the types of headlines and stories that should inform the debate here at the Capitol. You cannot move to avoid the corporate tax bill that we proposed in Invest in Our New York. ExxonMobil is already based in Irving, Texas. Tyson Chicken is already based in Arkansas. They sell hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of products into New York, and they pay New York taxes on those profits. That's right, and that's appropriate. That's why public polling, as Carolyn mentioned, shows that vast majorities of New Yorkers, including majorities of conservatives and Republicans, say that New York should increase taxes on the highest-earning individuals, the most profitable corporations, and the wealthiest households to fund public programs and services. I want to take one second to talk about capital gains tax, because Blake Washington and Mark Mascherini in their technical briefing with reporters after the governor's budget address noted that the thing that took us from a $5.5 billion deficit to a $2.2 billion surplus was a burst of capital gains. We taxed those capital gains at our regular income tax rate. Those individuals are dramatically undertaxed at the federal level. You pay higher taxes on your paycheck than you do when you get a check from your huge investments on Wall Street. So a capital gains tax, like Washington State instituted two years ago, like Minnesota instituted this year, would benefit New York tremendously. Billions of dollars to fund housing, to fund schools, to fund healthcare, and it would only hit 1% of taxpayers, who are already undertaxed at the federal level. A capital gains tax is timely, it's one of the five bills, and we stand with the Invest in Our New York campaign to urge you to consider all five bills in this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Assemblyman Ra.
Thank you. Just wanted to point out, and I mean, if you disagree, please tell me, but Mr. Gustaf, you, you talked about, that it was said earlier that, you know, the higher earners pay too higher rate, and I mean, maybe we would probably agree to disagree about that, but I think what Acting Commissioner Heller was saying, which is something that I think is not something that can be argued, is that, you know, they make up a very large portion of our tax base. And, and when there's fluctuations, that can have a very big impact on our tax receipts. Do you disagree with that?
I think that's generally right.
Yeah. So just, just that, that point of clarification. Now, we can, you know, we can debate what that appropriate share is, but it, but it does have an impact when we have sea ebbs and flows in the economy, because we are so heavily reliant on that piece of the tax base. But I did want to ask about something which I think many of us might be able to agree upon, which is, if you have any comments on that, the recent report that came out about all the tax incentive programs and the, you know, kind of lack of a bang for a buck that we're getting, because when we talk about revenue, certainly there are any number of proposals out there for, for new sources of revenue, but there is also a lot of revenue we forego as a state, trying to, you know, do so in the name of economic development, and most of the programs are not doing too well in, in terms of that.
Yeah, FBI would agree with that. I'd say there are two pretty widely agreed-upon fundamental principles of sound tax policy. One is progressivity, to make the tax system fair, and the other is having a broad base. The more that you selectively grant exemptions or cut people out of the tax system, the less revenue you get, and the more burden is shifted onto all other taxpayers. And so all of those credits and exemptions certainly really undermine the broad-based prong of New York's tax code. And, you know, they should be, at a minimum, very heavily scrutinized.
And if anybody else has any thoughts, there's about 35 seconds left.
The Invest in Our New York campaign supports shifting those economic development funds into the public programs we've named.
And I'll note that the return on investment data in that report shows that there's not a single quote-unquote "economic development" program in New York that provides a higher return on investment than investments in early childhood education, public health programs, or housing for New Yorkers who are homeless. All of those programs provide a way bigger bang for the buck than any of the economic development programs we have now.
Thank you.
We next go to Assemblyman Mamdamni.
Thank you very much for all of your testimonies. Mr. Gustaf, I wanted to just follow up with you on a set of questions. You know, the governor, in her State of the State, said that, quote, "People aren't moving for warmer weather or for lower taxes, they're moving next door." I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on that, and if you could elaborate on what you think the best way is to deal with the affordability crisis that she was alluding to.
Thank you, Assemblymember. That, we were very pleased to see the governor make that statement in her State of the State as it tracked very closely with the findings of our report that had been published just a little bit earlier. What we think that shows, and it follows on previous research that FBI has done as well, is that the biggest differences between New York and neighboring states is really in the cost of living, and in particular, in the cost of housing and the cost of rent, really not the tax structure. So that confirms what should be intuitive to many of us, which is that, that just the challenges of affordability, and in particular, the high cost of housing and rent, is a much stronger explanation for migration behavior of low- and middle-income earners in particular. What we think should be done at the state level, among other things, is really significant public investment in housing construction. It's important to create affordable housing for people at the low end of the income spectrum, but it's also important to increase the production of housing for middle-income renters, both so that people have somewhere to go, but really to reduce pressure in the housing market. And we think it's unlikely that you'll see those kinds of protections against market risks for middle-income renters without a focused plan of state investment in something like a social housing authority that has been proposed in the Assembly.
Thank you for that. And just a follow-up question from some of what Commissioner Heller's testimony focused on, as well as the questions that they received. Just wanted to hear your thoughts, you know, after the personal income tax increase that we enacted through the budget in 2021, the state's own tax website showed the millionaire population grew and the rate of millionaire outmigration shrank. What does that data tell us? What does it tell you? What does it tell the Fiscal Policy Institute about the correlation or lack thereof between taxes and the millionaire population?
Yeah, there, there are a few things we've seen. One is that when we look at the data that we can see from other sources, such as the census, as well as the Tax Department's data, the millionaire outmigration trend decreases from 2020 to 2021. So obviously, the pandemic itself is a confounding factor, but 2021 is when the state last raised income taxes. So it doesn't look to us, based on the data that we can see, that that caused more people to move away. Fewer high earners moved away from 2020 to 2021. I think I missed something.
Thank you very much.
So thank you all for being here. There are no, no further questions. As I mentioned earlier, all of the testimony is available for the public, as well as other colleagues, to see on the Assembly and Senate's websites. Just for anybody listening, as of the close of today, if anybody who hasn't yet submitted testimony, you still can submit testimony. That will be made public. So this concludes the tax hearing for this year on the governor's budget. We will reconvene at, promptly, at 12:00 noon for the start of the housing hearing. Thank you.